I'll call the Huntington Township Planning Commission April meeting to order. First item of business, public comment on agenda items. Is there any? Not hearing any? Okay. Moving on, next item of business is approval of minutes of the March 24th meeting, which you should have copies of. Does anybody have any additions, corrections to the minutes as presented?
No.
Not hearing any, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the March 24th meeting for record.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
By Jeff, second by Tom Holland, say aye.
Aye.
Moving on. I guess the next. Gus, are you ready for zoning officers report?
Yeah.
Are you waiting for the?
Coming up. You should, permit to, on March 27, 95 Tracy Drive, for 20 rooftop solar panels. On the 29th of March, a waiver letter to David Pittman, 7129 Cara La Pike, he replaced his gutters. 327, building permit, 25, actually 2444, it's for 35 solar panels. And it's for my master, 1266. I can't read my scribble. But it was, that was I believe for Old Harrisburg Road.
Gus, do you want to see this? Since you don't have it up there?
Yeah.
And then give it back to me.
Then I did a, on 8th of April, didn't you? 8th of April, I did a, received a conditional use application from Carl Leach, at 821 Southridge Road, for a conditional use hearing, which is scheduled for May the 8th. And after that, we did an occupancy permit for Darren Allman, at 5535 Old Harrisburg Road. He replaced a front porch, which is 16 by 24. On the 8th of April, LCDM, building permit number 25-015, this is for 255 White Church Road. They're proposing to put an office addition on to the building that already exists there, 50 feet by 50 feet. Brian Stumpf, building permit number 25-016, 2301 Cranberry Road, building a 15 foot by 30 foot goat shed. Ken Rudolph, at 415 of 25, building permit 25-017, he's removing a single Y mobile home and installing a double Y. Building permit 25-018, Shane Ryan at 45 Wendy Drive, 20 rooftop solar panels. Building permit 25-019, Edwin Bollos, at 122 Tammy Drive, this is a brand new house, he just bought it. He's putting on a deck on the rear of the house, 16 by 24 feet. Keith Sarzulo, 1795 Cranberry Road, he's building a 40 by 80 foot pole barn. And building permit number BP 24-037, an occupancy permit to Garment Homes, for a two-story single-family home at 114 Tammy Drive. That's a final inspection. And we've done, that's everything there.
What time is the conditional use hearing?
7 o'clock.
So it's the beginning of the supervisor's meeting?
Right.
Okay.
And the, when I'm here, I have a couple of notes. The electronic drop-off will be May 17th, at 10 to 2 o'clock, here at our township. I got everybody that's present, and that's it.
Okay. I guess Scott, your engineers' report?
Um, bring my work. There's no change since last month. It's still open, and they're working on site restoration. Myers Town Road was bid, and contractor was selected, Low Bar Site Development. So the next step is scheduling a pre-construction meeting, and then construction can begin June Saldo update, nothing new. Everything's been delivered to Todd, the solicitor, for his review, and given to the board supervisors. Plan reviews, JVI conditional approval was obtained by the supervisors. 4J Farm, it was conditionally approved by the planning commission, and it's up on the agenda for the next supervisor's meeting. And EB clearing, first review was done, we just got comments today from the county, and Panda HOP and NPDs permits are in process.
Okay. All right. That it? Thank you. Next item is old business. And Gus, do you have a JVI report? Do you have anything?
Well, the JVI, I have a plan here that they dropped off for me, and it's part of the overall, it's a plan for a 17-foot long retaining wall. Have any of you driven faster than last week? They've leveled off the building site, and the drop-off at the edge of the driveway, as you drive out, that's where the retaining wall is gone. And it'll go from a couple of feet to the height, 13 foot. That's to hold that driveway back. That's all I have at this time, I'm waiting for them to walk in with the land development plan, and the highway occupancy permit that's been approved, and so has the NPDs, so I'm waiting for them to walk in with it. That's all that I have on that.
We have a, they have a, don't they have a time extension on the plan?
They have a time extension till May.
Till May.
Why are you shaking your head?
It was conditionally approved at the last supervisor's meeting.
Yeah. What were the conditions? The one request I have, if something's conditionally approved, the supervisors can make up their own mind, but when we conditionally approve something, I'd like to see in the notes what the conditions were.
In my last review.
Go ahead.
In my last review letter, it listed all the conditions that I recommended.
Okay.
And you approved that in your recommendation to the supervisor.
As you outlined in your letter, we should at least say that.
Which includes the HOP permit, which was issued, the NPDs permit, which was issued, financial security, we're waiting on, and it was, I want to know if they had a change on the plan, and if they, I don't remember exactly what it is.
You've been out at the site?
I was out at the site three weeks ago, was the last time I was out there.
And everything to that point was okay?
But they're still not done with all the conditions?
Correct.
At least one, that you said, and the one you may not remember, whether it's done or not.
Well, that and personal security.
That's the one, yeah.
That's one of the only words it's holding up.
Okay. So they don't need an extension? It was approved?
It's all right.
Yeah. Okay. So an extension's moved, okay. Why did, why did they come back with a request for something to do with the retaining wall? Why wasn't that in the, just because it's new?
Not a request, it was just a report that that's the next project.
It's just the geotechnical structural drawings for the design of the wall, it's typically not included in the land development plan.
But we don't have the land? Well, I guess it was conditionally approved last time. Okay. Got it. All right. Thank you.
All right, there's no action, anything needed from us on that, so I guess the next item is a report on LCDM.
LCDM sent me, and I got it today. It's a, they have a, they're, they're in process right now for the building permit for the office, 50 by 50. I'm gonna pass this around. You'll get it, it's got a nice picture of the building with the office built on it, and they're in the process. They got caught in sort of a catch 22, because the, the only occupancy permit that was issued for that building was for a storage building. That's all it ever was.
Right.
And so now, they've applied for a permit as a change of use, that's gonna take it to the manufacturing facility, and of course, the office is separate.
Right.
So that is what they're submitting to the inspection agency, that's insisting that they have a, an occupancy permit for what is there, or proposed. And so, we'll get over, it shows you the layout of the building. They do have their septic system in, and they have water into the building, so they can use the restroom. But until I get the okay from the inspector, that their stuff meets every requirement, and I can issue the building permit, they have no building permit yet.
So I'm still confused. So they're looking for an occupancy permit for the building that's there, and a building permit for the one they want to build? Is that accurate?
Exactly. They need to have an occupancy permit for what they.
What it is. Yeah, I understand, because it was a storage building, and there isn't anymore.
Probably never was.
Okay.
And that's everything on LCDM.
Okay.
If you haven't, if anybody hasn't driven out by, there's a big change from what it looked like before.
They cleaned it all up.
They really did. They really did. Is there anything for us to do then?
Is this on the other side? Is this, is the new part towards the road, or the other side of the building?
It's on the end. If you pull in the driveway and turn toward the building.
It's parallel to the street.
Okay. Okay.
Did they expedite the second building? I thought it was gonna be a while before they were doing the second.
Well, in, there is a projection of a future building about the same size as the.
The one that's there.
The one that's there, that'll be after the office. So that is someplace in the future.
That's the later.
That'll be phase whatever.
Okay. It looks like the bathrooms are a shape interior.
You have to strip the boards. Pass it. You guys.
Keep going.
We can look through that. There's no action.
No action. Yeah.
Okay, that's it for that.
Yep.
The next item on the old business is the 4J Farm LLC.
And you have the paperwork there in front of you, we've conditionally approved it, that's the planning module.
Right.
And you can sign off on it.
Scott, is it all the conditions met on the?
Yeah, there weren't any conditions.
Why does it say it was conditionally approved?
Well, we were just waiting for them to do the.
Sewage module.
The sewage module, yeah. They had to redo it or something, I was. They didn't have the second change.
Yeah, they didn't have the second.
Yeah, same change. They forgot to do the second change.
Okay.
That's why it wasn't signed last month.
Okay. So we can, we can act on that, and sign that. I got, I guess I'll have to have a motion from the board to allow me to sign this DEP sewage module, as chairman. Anybody want to make a motion to allow signature?
I'll make that.
On the DEP sewage module?
So Tom and Ron.
Right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Okay. Is that, I'm not sure who's back here for this. Are you for?
Oh, we're asking.
No.
No, Ken Scott isn't here.
No. Well, then I'll wait to sign this till at the end.
All right.
Is there any other old business we have to take care of?
Milk that thing.
Moving on to new business, plan for EB clearing.
Mr. Wilson? He's not here.
What we have is the county comments, and the letter from the Soil Conservation District.
Yeah. And we have, Scott's.
Oh, there is.
I don't need it here.
Let's see, I don't know if Scott's calling.
I don't have any of it, Scott.
Maybe we're in, his report last month.
Okay. We need to go.
Yeah, we're good. I think we're good after.
Okay, I feel like I'm in a bit of a disadvantage, I missed the last meeting on this, but I'm confused by what's going on here. Because we have, we have a compliance notice for EB that's showing some issues.
That's, that's just, it's first draft from Conservation District. Everyone gets one. It's not a denial, it's just an incomplete notice, they have some more things that they have to submit for review.
Okay. I agree, it's not a denial, but it's, I mean, everybody doesn't get the same letter, because they have some issues. They have specific issues to them, around infiltration and the like. So what, what are we being asked to do now?
They've acknowledged that they dropped it off, and there's work to be done, we need comments from everybody. You can't approve it, not even with condition.
Yeah. I think that the point of submitting it to the board is that you have a chance to look at it.
Okay.
We ask you to act on it next time, if not brand new.
Okay. Fair enough.
It's just that the engineer's not here to explain to you or answer any questions. But if you have any questions, I'll do my best to explain as well as I can, on his behalf.
Okay. First question I have, was this as a result of a complaint?
No. This is a different parcel.
This parcel is on Old Harrisburg Road, right, right up the street from the storage shed.
Yeah, Underworks.
Oh, okay.
Right across Sunset Lane.
Yeah, it's on the left.
Correct.
That's useful information. Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
It's like quick.
Yeah. The house beside it is.
It's on the next, it's on the next mile.
Yeah.
It's just real close to the property. It's right here.
Years ago, that Panda permit.
Okay.
Underworks, huh?
The intent of the plan is to prepare a site for them to store and sell mulch. They have a place to store it, and loaded, sort of like a retail.
Retail.
Well, isn't that what they're doing now on White Church?
I guess they're making it there, they don't have enough room to store it all, and to have sales at the same time.
They process back, that's mainly the process.
The point of this is for some temporary storage for a retail sale.
And these, these pictures that were in the report are from that Old Harrisburg location? Accurate?
No, they're from the other.
I often see that, they're from the original place.
Well, it has, it has the address of the original place, so I'm back to being confused.
Is that?
No, that's the 346 White Church Road.
This is the original site.
That is a different site, that is the, that is not the same as the land development plan.
Yeah, this, this is the new spot.
This is White Church Road.
The two issues, the two separate issues or two separate addresses?
Okay. What are we addressing right now?
The land development plan for the new property.
Okay. All right. Because I want to come back and address this other one as well. But okay, that's fine, let's address. So the point of the, the new property, I'll call it, is for us to be informed tonight, but take no action.
Yeah, and to raise any questions or issues you might have, so that the applicant has a chance to address that.
Okay.
And none of these notes pertain to this.
No, the inspection's a different property.
The inspection is different.
All right.
Now, the county's note, comments, and my comments, and the Conservation District comments, they all do apply to this.
All they apply to this.
So they haven't a dozen as the.
But not the 102 inspection report?
Correct.
Okay, I'm gonna set that aside from, all right.
Same client, different project.
Yeah.
Correct.
Is there a property address or a parcel number for the new property?
Yeah, 67, 6745 Old Harrisburg Road. 6745 Old Harrisburg Road.
Yeah, it's on the land development. Okay. Set that aside. Next topic.
So if I have a copy, I guess we can take that, take that along.
Yeah, I submitted one last month.
Could you, to the board of supervisors or here?
To the township.
Okay. Can you send me?
Yeah, can you send those, Roxie?
Yes, and then I'll send them to everybody.
Yeah, I see.
Gus, has this EB preliminary final land development plan been formally submitted? It's formal?
No, that's the first presentation we've had.
It has been formally submitted.
So we need a table.
I think this is.
We need a table tonight.
This is Old Harrisburg Road.
Yeah, yeah.
This is the, the plan.
This is Old Harrisburg Road. Correct?
Yes. That is correct.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. And you have comments, but we don't know what they are?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's in the letter.
You have the letter?
I have the letter.
All right. Are there a lot of comment, I mean, can you just read us the comments?
Three pages of them.
Three pages of comments, okay. Well, because it's not helpful if we don't have those, to comment on your comments. Okay. Well, Roxie'll send those around.
Yeah, everybody has a copy of that. Take, till the next meeting, you can review it, look at it, and come back if you have any questions, we can go over it then. But at this point in time, I'll entertain a motion to table the.
I'll make that move.
Preliminary final land development plan for EB clearing on 6745 Old Harrisburg Road.
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion by Ron, second by Tom Holland, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So moved.
Who is the second?
Tom.
Tom.
All right. Is there any other new business?
Well, I propose we discuss this 102 inspection report that was in front of us when we sat down.
That pertains to the.
Other property.
Other site of EB.
But isn't that falling under the county, not us?
It's an informational letter, tells you now.
Right. Right. We don't do anything with it.
It's not action.
All right. But there were complaints made to the township. Is this a result of the complaints made to the township?
Yeah.
And then further made to other?
It's in conjunction with.
Okay. All right, so we need to understand.
Is there any, do the others of property have any actionable steps they're gonna take to correct post-construction stormwater?
Yes.
Okay.
The Conservation District was handling that, they informed them of what they needed to do.
Okay.
Are you involved in this? Are you informed of it?
I'm informed, but I'm not involved in it.
Okay. And that's all recorded, provided to us?
Yes.
Primarily all handled by the county.
Right.
And the Conservation District, yes.
Do you have any comments about it?
No, I don't. It seems to be in order, their plan seems to be sufficient, the Conservation District is handling it. And I agree with their measures.
Okay. But whose plan? You said their plan is sufficient, whose plan?
Yes, the owners. The owner's plan. Owner's plan has, is with the Conservation District.
Okay, I don't see an owner's plan in front of us, I just see the complaints of the county or the Conservation District.
Right, right, the, the plan is, was submitted seven or eight years ago. It wasn't fully implemented.
Yeah, okay.
That's why there's the issue.
Okay.
They tried to terminate the plan without completing the plan requirements.
Okay.
But the plan was approved by the Conservation District eight or 10 years ago.
Okay, and now they're finding deficiencies?
Right, because they tried to close the permit and the permit came unclosed because they're not done.
They're not finished.
Right.
So now. So, right, so now the Conservation District is telling them, hey, you gotta finish this, your time's up.
Would the Conservation District have had knowledge of that without a complaint?
Nope. I don't know if her visit to the site was a, was a result of the complaint or as a result of their request for.
Probably the request.
For termination. I don't know what prompted it, it was one of the two, could have been both.
Well, do they, they do a periodic inspection too, don't they?
Excuse me? Yes.
They do a periodic inspection to see that things are.
Yes, but it just.
Are working the way they're supposed to.
Right, they, they go to the hotspots.
Okay.
They don't go to the same, different sites at the same interval.
Yep.
So they, they probably weren't there for several years.
That's what I'm reading it.
Well, whenever, when they want to close the permit out, you're subject to the final inspection.
Right.
Scott, this looks like this permit was renewed or at least extended to 2020.
Yes.
So another four-year extension.
Yeah, they had to. The permit is always extended for that long. You can't just extend the permit for six months or a year.
No, right.
It's extended for the whole five years.
Correct, okay.
So there's no, no action on that, it's, it's nothing for us, but it's an information. Okay.
Well, and I think we in the Board of Supervisors need to be kept apprised, given that there's one of our, there's a complaint in this township regarding this site. So this isn't just forget about it. And I'm not saying you did, but for us, this isn't just forget about, I know there's no action.
Great.
Okay.
But the county's doing their due diligence.
It appears, it appears they are, yep, and it's their role, that's correct.
It's their jurisdiction.
Yep. Okay, well, I'd, I'd request that you just keep us, keep apprised yourself and keep us apprised for those reasons, thank you.
Scott, I have a question. These dates that are on this inspection report. The permit issuance date, 2025, what permit?
That was the reissue process. The renewal.
That's, okay, and then it's, goes till 29?
Yes.
All right. Is there any other, any other new business?
Question, legit, he indicated the county is doing their due diligence. Is he, are you referring to the Conservation District?
Yes, Conservation, they're, they're letting us know what is going on with them concerning this, this permit.
And thank you for keeping up with.
Pardon me?
They're required to.
They're, yeah, yeah.
They're the, they're the enforcement agency.
Yeah. Okay.
Do they give them a timeframe to delete it?
Well, follow-up inspection is occurring right first, so that's, I'd call that a timeframe.
But.
Correct.
They have to, supposed to have it done by then?
They're encouraging them to have it completed, yes.
Okay.
Because there's, it's that matzo ball that's hanging out there, they need to.
Right.
Finish up.
Yep. If they don't get it completed, eventually it can get fined and everything.
Yeah, they, they say they'll initiate enforcement action. I would say that's an action I.
I, I think it was sent to Ron Eberts. There's carbon copy of Ron Eberts at Central Office, South Central.
Yeah.
If they pull Ron Eberts down, then you're gonna be paying money, and they are, usually. So, all right. No other new businesses on the agenda? I got public comments next, but, yes.
I think I'll make them as I can, I can pick something up. At last month's Planning Commission meeting, it included a discussion about that electronic recycling event to be held here on May 17th. And Planning Commission member Marlon Enzer brought up that the Renewing Springs School District had 12 to 14 TVs. And Mr. Enzer asked Mr. Vindervalls if they could bring them to the recycling event. I have questions from Mr. Enzer. As a member of the Planning Commission, what is your official capacity at the Bermudean Springs School District?
Facility maintenance.
Facilities maintenance?
And the wastewater and drinking water systems operator.
So that, that's your official title?
Yes.
Okay. So, under what school district authorization did you have to make the request? And when was the authorization given to you?
There was no authorization request.
So, as an official of the school district, are you familiar with the waste hauling contract that the school district is under?
The waste hauling contract?
Correct.
Are you, what, what waste are you talking, you're talking?
They have a waste hauling contract.
Yes, they do.
Okay, are you familiar with it?
Not, no.
So, what was your intent in bringing it up, that you're an employee and so is Gus, so you negotiated and Gus had given you permission and said, yeah, bring those TVs down? So I'm trying to find out, because as Huntington Township has a contract with waste management and through a right-to-no request, I got a copy of what the school district, they also have waste management. These are two different, completely different contracts. And to, for lack of a better word, co-mingle this, these could be breaching contract provisions. So if you're not, if you're not familiar with those contract provisions, how could, why would you bring that up and?
Because the school district pays, has to pay to get rid of electronic devices. We have to pay to take them to a recycling place, pay for each individual unit. And if our township was offering, where Renewing Springs is in the township.
Right.
If the township is offering electronic take-back, why can't I ask the question to save taxpayers' money from the school district on somewhere else?
Because you, you indicated you had no authorization to do that. That's the big issue here. And as a resident, when the township has a contract, okay, when they have a contract, they have to abide by those provisions. And this, and I've been in contact with the business manager who's in charge of that. He had told me the electronics are actually traded in. So that's, that's why I'm concerned that you as a Planning Commission member are here to represent the residents, not this school district. So you're kind of co-mingling business and I want to know why, as a resident. If you have no authorization from the school district, how could you come in here and use your authority here to bring that up and recycle something from the school district? And I realize the taxpayers pay no matter whether it's school district or here, but it's co-mingling business. And I'm sure if the school district knew, they may get upset about that. I mean, you know nothing about the contract or the provisions. I have a copy of the contract. I've spoken, I've emailed Mr. Priat, he said I have you, the business manager.
You spoke with him, you should know how it's pronounced.
I, I emailed him, I got everything in writing.
Okay.
And that's what I'm concerned about.
There was no ill intent meant by, and by this, so.
No, but it, it appears it's the good old boy club where you're using your, your appointment as a Planning Commission member to also kind of make yourself look good to the school district in getting rid of those televisions. That's the way it looks to me. I'm from Philadelphia, I know all the little ins and outs of the, you know, what, what officials do, but I was upset because there's provisions of contracts that could be broken, it could be a breach of the contract from Huntington Township and the district. And you won't, you won't get in trouble, it'll be the administrator who gets in trouble. So that's all I have to say.
Okay. Is there any other public comments?
Did you look at the Cronister plan at all?
Cronister?
Not yet.
What plan?
Cronister plan, is there, there's nothing discussed here or?
Not yet.
It's not, not on the agenda.
Have you?
Yeah, there's a plan in the office, but it's just one copy. Okay. Are you the engineer?
Is that, are you the engineer?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, there's, there's so many items that you have to submit so that it can be distributed for review. And it has to go to the county for their review as well, there's, there's a multiple step process.
Yeah, I understand that. Okay, I, I wasn't sure what you're.
No, I, I didn't even know that the plan existed, so there's, there's multiple steps to check.
Apparently there was a plan done some years ago on the site. And I, I didn't know if it had to go through that normal process or.
Oh, yeah.
Sir, could I have your name?
Clark Crammer.
Spell your last name, please.
C-R-A-U-M-E-R.
And you're with?
Clark B. Crammer.
Okay.
If you get old, this is middle together, it'll be up on the next, for next month. Is there any other public comments?
Andy? Just a comment from our JIS division. I know they reached out to somebody here at Gus' Roadmaster, I'm not sure about updating the Master Street Index.
The what?
The updating the Master Street Index list the county makes sense. They asked me to remind everybody that they're looking for that to be updated so that they have the, that's the list that feeds into the 911 center.
Okay.
As soon as they can get that updated, the better. It also, it also leads into one of the things that Scott and I have to sit down with and discuss. Saldo after about the street classification component that will go in there, but that part, they're really just making sure, they're doing this county-wide, so every municipality, they need that information, that updated as soon as they can so that that information is correct.
And who, who needs this?
It's our, my, it's my.
Okay, okay.
Working some with the 911.
Okay.
Any other public comments? Is there anything on the board? Not hearing any other, nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make it.
Second.
Okay, the motion's been made by Tom, seconded by Kyle. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so move. For the next meeting, before you, before you leave, the next meeting's 19th of May. And that's reorganization meeting too.
His term's up. His term is up. Mine, okay.